It's time to bring the MOCO Township Planning Commission meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, February 4th, 2020. Time is 7:00 PM. Stand for the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Shudo?
Here.
Mr. Provenzano? Mr. Provenzano was absent. Mr. Oliver?
Here.
Mr. Tuckfield is present. Mr. Hardy? Mr. Hardy is absent. Mr. Bentley?
Here.
Mr. Chairman, we have four members and a quorum this evening. And I'd just note for the record that Mr. Hardy and Mr. Provenzano have notified us they'd be absent, so they're excused this evening.
I'd like to make a motion to exclude Member Hardy and a Member Provenzano from any and all roll call votes, if we have any.
Motion by Mr. Shudo, support?
Support.
Support by Mr. Bentley, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. All righty, approval of the January 21st, 2020 meeting minutes.
If there's no additions, leations, or corrections, I make a motion, we accept the minutes as read.
Mr. Chairman, I think we did have some minor corrections that Mr. Bentley was good enough to email. They were some missing words that were intermittent minutes. Mr. Bentley might be able to expound on that, but as long as you're okay with that jasper, there was some minor corrections.
The latest minutes have been corrected.
They have been?
For those comments.
Okay.
Very good.
Yeah, that's why.
Add that to it?
Well, if they're correct, we probably just do it as read.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Shudo?
A second.
Supported by Mr. Bentley, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the motion passes. Approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I think we had talked about moving the election of the officers to the end.
We're gonna leave it.
No, we're gonna run, we're just gonna keep going through that, yeah.
Very good. That being said, if nobody has any other concerns, I'd make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Mr. Tuckfield, second by Mr. Bentley, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item six, election of the officers. That would be the chairman, the vice chair, and the secretary for the Planning Commission Board.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Michael Hardy as our chairman.
Support. Support by Mr. Tuckfield?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bentley, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, nobody?
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I'd like to nominate Member Tuckfield as our vice chairman.
Motion by Mr. Shudo, support by Mr. Bentley? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, nay?
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I'd like to nominate Member Bentley as our secretary.
Motion by Mr. Shudo, support by Mr. Tuckfield? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Shudo, for taking the time to do that. New business, public hearings. This is really not, I'm gonna go to eight, because... Whole business, special land use, Sunny Pools and More, permanent parcel 0818-326-002, located on the west side of Industrial Drive, approximately 443 feet north of 23 Mile Road. Section 18, Kevin Zakarsky, and I'm sorry if I messed that up. Petitioner tabled from January 21st, 2020. Mr. Skirdal, could you run us through this, please?
Yes, Sunny's Pool currently occupies the aforementioned building on Industrial Drive. They're opening in business, but they require a special land use approval in order to remain operational. The applicant petitioner has been working with the city since 2019 on different aspects. He approached the Planning Commission on January 21st. He was in front of the Planning Commission to present his petition. Since that time, the Planning Department has been working with Mr. Zakarsky on ordinance requirements for parking, retail space, and such. While on a site visit, I saw the fire department, fire marshal was onsite at the same time. I don't know what the outcomes of that were, but a firewall was an issue that had been brought up by both the Building Department and the Fire Department prior to the 21st. Based on emails going back and forth, and a rough sketch given to a department to review, the department recommends approval, but the approval is qualified on six conditions. Condition one is all Building Department requirements are met. That includes the firewall. Item two, condition two is fire department requirements are met, especially with the amount of chemicals and the need for firewall. Condition three, the retail space does not exceed 4,000 square feet an area. That keeps the onsite side yard parking within ordinance limits. Number four, the two barrier-free parking spaces in the side yard are properly marked. We noticed that some blue marking is required for one space and has to be van accessible. Number five, eight required employee parking spaces remain properly marked in the rear yard, and per the ordinance requirements, any locked gate must be removed, unless that's approved by the Planning Commission. And number six, a fully dimensioned floor and site plan is submitted to the township for records.
Okay.
That's our report, thank you.
Mrs. Zakarsky, did you, are you aware of all this, or is this new to you? Or you've been working with the planners and...
Conversations have gone back and forth across the board. Some of this stuff is new, but it's basically what has been discussed along the whole time here, so it all makes sense.
All right, so did you clearly understand what he wants you to do?
Well, we need it in writing, so I can follow step by step, but yes.
Okay. How long is this gonna take to get completed?
Probably two months. The reason for that is weather, for the conditions for the painting and parking things, which is simple, but still weather-related. Moving showrooms around, it's manpower, as the kids start coming back from spring break and stuff like that, they might be there to help us, but within two months, no problem. Because most of the stuff is in place.
Okay.
A firewall itself is there. There is a firewall in the building separating the front and the back. And we've already started moving chemicals out of the building that the Fire Department would like to have us reduce, and they also had no problem storing some chemicals outside. So occupancy permit is done, besides the three things the Fire Department asked be done. When he was on the site visit last week, he said they are done, but communications between the Fire Department and this building here are not done yet, for those small infractions, which are all set.
Okay. All right, commissioners, any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question on your drawing here. You have display showroom by appointment, approximately 4,000 square feet?
Right.
What does that mean? I call up and I can go look at the chemicals in the back room, or how does that...
No, as we were discussing last meeting, you brought up a good question, we've had some discussions about it. Moving some of the showroom to the front showroom is the chemicals, and most of the times the customers are coming in and walking to the front counter, asking for help. Us taking them to be helped and getting the products from them, a lot of times, they don't go in the back. But if you are looking for a hot tub, we would take you back to that showroom and visit with you and go over it with you, and then, and we've talked with our insurance company, they have no trouble with it at all.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, a couple of questions. One of the, I think it was the third requirement, that a maximum 4,000 square foot be used for retail. The 4,000 square foot approximately for this display showroom by appointment, that's, is that represent the 4,000 for retail? Or would retail also include A, which is another 1,400 square feet, and as well B? I'm, if that's a requirement, what is the definition of retail space for this 4,000 square foot limit?
The 4,000 square foot limit would encompass areas A and E.
Okay. So is E reduced by 1,400 square feet?
It will have to be.
Okay.
May I ask a question on that?
Yes.
To reduce it to that space, is that because of parking spots?
Correct.
Okay, if the parking spots we have on the side of the building is 19, I think a little bit more than this was 38 parking spots. The building next door to us does not use their, all their parking spot, which is, here's a parking spot, and where you're sitting is the other parking spot, basically. If we were to petition them and ask them in writing if we could use some of their parking spots that they're not using, would that be okay?
I generally don't think we do that, do we?
Not that I'm aware of. There is a, I don't, I can't quote the ordinance per se, that look to see if there's a shared parking provision within the ordinance, so I can't say definitely if it's permitted by this township or not.
Yeah. Okay.
Because 19 parking spots, I wish I would have 19 people show up at one time in that building. Like the gentleman mentioned last time we were here, sales itself of the retail world is diminishing, as we know by looking around the places. We don't have generally more than five to seven customers in the building at any given time. And if we were to look at the past month, we generally have no more than one to three show up in an entire day during the winter season. Granted, summertime is different. Yes, on a Saturday at 10 o'clock, we could have 11 cars show up at 10 o'clock in the morning, but we don't have that many, need for that many parking spots. When we were at the old building, heck, Hallmark, the pizza place, the cleaners, the chiropractor, and that, when the Imagine Theater would take up our parking spot, we had probably 16 parking spots for all five of those retail developments, and we had no trouble with that. But that's when Imagine would overflow into our parking lot. So I have, I can understand the purpose of all the parking spaces, but we don't need them.
So you have eight required parking spaces for employees, and then how many do you have in addition for...
There's 19 on the side of the building for consumers, and there's 10 minimum behind the building.
That's 29.
And that was, and behind the building itself was originally fenced in, I believe, by Randazzo because of storage. So that nice fence is there, so we just left it there. The gate used to be a electrical one, we disconnected that, and we just lock it up at night just to protect our vehicles from being vandalized.
So that's for employees, then?
For the employees, primarily. Generally, employees during peaks, well, peak season itself might be seven cars, if lucky. And a lot of them are younger kids who are being dropped off there by their mom and dad, so there's no parking for them.
Okay, so related to, the area was the first question I had, so adjustment there, the 4,000. I guess, and that needs to be identified, are all these requirements, these six requirements, in writing someplace?
I did type them up today, redo that, I did type up a list to present tonight.
Okay, the other question that you inferred, or the other requirement, was that it meets the Building Department requirements and the Fire Department requirements. The Fire Department had indicated that they needed some sort of firewall separating, I think it was 2,000 pounds of chemical. The note that I see now is 500 pounds. And so I, my question is, there is still a firewall requirement per year statement number two that the Fire Department requires. I would, I would say that's probably a fire separation wall. Firewalls are freestanding in case a building falls down on either side of it. So a fire separation, has there been any discussion about a fire separation wall? And is that where the F area is? Or is that between the stock area D and the display showroom E?
The actual firewall that's in the building right now would be between E and the CAB up in front. I mean, there's, that's the firewall. And so we've agreed to get rid of a lot of the chemicals already, and/or the Fire Department says we can store them outside in proper containers. They said that's more than adequate, we got plenty of room back there, without even concerning the parking spots that are there because of the loading docks and such. The firewall itself, again, is, because of how that building's designed, is between, like I said, the display showroom and the front. The Fire Department doesn't want anybody walking into the stock area. And that itself is basically partitioned by pallet racks with inventory on it. And of course, we were gonna put, like you see at Home Depot, the expandable metal fence, as you might call it, to keep you from going down the aisle when they're working on a high-low, to keep any of the, in, customers from walking back too far.
Okay. I apologize, but I am a little bit confused about the fire separation wall or firewall requirement, where that has to be. You've mentioned that you can store it outside, or you can store it inside. But if you store it inside, they are already in writing saying there needs to be a fire separation wall.
The volatile chemicals they're worried about, they would be moved up into section A, as they said, minimum five, they don't do more than 500 pounds. And some of it would be stored in section five, and they'd have no trouble with that, or section F. So basically, they're referring to as one-pound bags of chlorine shock, which is made of calcium perchlorate. If I go to ACO Hardware, if I go to Home Depot, I go to any of the stores, they have more than that in their floor, in a more dangerous situation than I do in my store, in general. So you have seasonal things. So you might have milk sitting there, bread sitting there, and a pallet of shocks sitting in the middle over at Myers. At Ace Hardware, you'll see meratic acid within 10 feet of piles of shocks. So we are very, very careful about these products. But they just asked not to have more than 500 pounds in the building, which we would do, and we'd store it up in A area, because that's the customers coming and grabbing a bag, or we'd put it outside in the container. So that, no trouble, fire marshal happy about that.
When they said you could store 500 maximum in area A, did they delete the requirement for the fire separation?
No, the fire separation is still, would be required, which is the wall that's in the building.
So the wall that's there is not a fire separation wall. It can be if the, if the doors are rated.
The doors are rated.
They are rated?
Yes.
They weren't by the material that you had submitted to us two weeks ago? The door was not labeled, and then there were two openings that had no doors. I have not been in the building, but I guess I'm going by your statements that it is now a firewall, or fire separation wall. I don't know that it's been approved by the Fire Department, because the Fire Department is still making a requirement on their second requirement, that it needs, there needs to be a firewall.
If they want more, if we wanted to store more volatile chemicals, they would love to see a new wall built, let's say around section F, which, then you'd have plenty of thing, but then you'd have this suppression system. They've been open to everything, as long as you can cut down the volume of chemicals, because again, and I'm not trying to be rude, the building that was at 23 in Hayes had more chemicals in it than what the Fire Department is asking me to reduce over here. Again, it's all about being safe and storage properly. And they also said, wow, you're next to the pizza store with a two-inch gas line? Hmm. But it wasn't looked at for the warehousing of it, they were looking at the retail of it. So we cannot afford to build a firewall around F, and a suppression system around F. Even the Fire Department says it'd be ridiculous, the amount of money. The gentleman said, anyway. If you reduce the amount of chemicals in the building, especially in the back area, and move it to the front area, the wall that's there is more than adequate for them, he said. And the steel door wall, the steel walls, the steel doors between those areas that are labeled in this picture here. So again, the retail is gonna be pushed more to the A section for the summertime customer. And during the wintertime, we don't store very much adult chemicals in there, because we're trying to have them all gone by the end of September. So during a lot of the time of the year, there's less than the Fire Department would require in the building at any time. It's mainly, you know, boxes and such.
Okay.
Mr. Tuckfield?
How'd you know I wouldn't say something? I did have a question. I, I wanna tackle this from just a slightly different angle, but I wanna make sure I address this. In, we have a, we have a fire recommendation in front of us. I don't think that the building portion of it is strictly our purview, I get that. But there is some stuff that makes me uncomfortable here. It may be that it's the same as the store, maybe less, maybe more, I don't know. I just have this report in front of me. What concerns me here is that on this report that we have, they indicate they want a firewall, a fire separation. Thank you, Mr. Bentley, for making the distinction there. And they also say directly after that, "and" that the general public shall not occupy the storage area of this facility. To me, I could be reading in more than it is, but that says that the public stays on one side of the firewall, and the product stays on the other. And what I see here is we have a display room in the stock area. Some, some size unknown. We also, they came back, said they're storing less chemicals. I don't know if that means that the requirement for what is protected is different. All I heard was that the fire restrictions were met, so I don't know if they've changed or stayed the same. I guess my question is, do we have something, do we have anything here where the Fire Department has looked at this, or knows where the public would be under this proposed use and is okay with it? Or is the idea tonight that we would pass the special land use and say they would have to meet fire requirements, and if they didn't like it, it would be stopped at a later point?
I think that's the second of this. The requirements that Mr. Skirdal had read us are the requirements that the Fire Department is gonna review along with this gentleman. And then, and you're saying two months. In two months of this, if the Fire Department is not satisfied, building's not satisfied, then we take another approach to this.
So when, and you asked for the site plan, the Fire Department are gonna see the site. My concern is that we're gonna get into a loop with the Fire Department where they're not going to see the fact that there's a display showroom. To me, that's the only real concern I have left. If that's something they'll end up seeing, and we're fine putting on the restrictions, and that's gonna trigger them, make a review, I'm good with it. But I just wanna make sure that that's basically the process we're following.
Yes, that's a process that we're recommending from planning. We have not seen the Fire Department report, but it's so complicated that we thought we'd put it in their hands. I can't even pronounce half the chemical names.
Fair enough.
So...
Okay.
Go ahead.
All that said, I'm, there's things that don't make me comfortable, but as long as we have protection that the Fire Department is going to approve this, I won't go forward. I'm satisfied with that. I don't, I don't wanna insert myself into a profession that's not my own. I just wanna make sure that petitioner is safe, and we're safe, and that the residents going in there are safe.
And you're aware, two months, this will be done, and because it is on record, you'll be able to get it done in two months?
Yes, again, we've had a lot of conversation with the Fire Department gentleman that comes out, and we've been cooperating greatly with him, trying to understand, and he trying to understand what's actually happening. So he feels comfortable. We know that there's a suppression system in there, which we've spent lots of money updating from the previous renter. And if we watch our chemicals and stock things properly, Building Department, Mechanical Departments and all that have been through the building more than one time, and have met all those needs. For the heaters on the ceiling, and height the boxes and all that, and I understand that. It's the chemicals that are causing an issue, which chemicals are in pool stores all the time in larger volumes than what he would like us to have. We'll reduce it and do outside storage.
Okay.
The firewall is, this question is confusing, because does the firewall, as someone mentioned, have to be between D and E? You know, that's, that's building a big wall, could cross both things, if that's what they're saying, and it has a certain burn rate. The block wall and the doors between E and A, for example, does meet those requirements. So if we were to put all the chemicals up in A, we would be okay. But what is retail, what is storage? That's the question. So the Fire Department itself, I have no trouble doing what they're saying every time they've come in. We've accommodated them. Some of the needs from here...
Well, this, not to interrupt you, but this is gonna follow a recommendation.
Yeah.
They're gonna recommend to the departments that you're okay. So that's within that two months that we're talking about?
Yeah.
Okay.
We just need to have the Fire Department come out again.
Okay, 'cause that's, that's the big, probably one of our biggest issues here is the safety, and that's it. I just want you to wear that two-month timeframe, okay? All right, anyone else, any questions?
Chairman, I do have one, sorry, are we gonna go out to the public?
It was, but if you got a question...
It's a procedural question, I'll wait until after we do that.
This time, I go to the public, anyone in the public have anything on this item? Okay, being none, bring it back to the board for comments or motions.
Mr. Chairman, I had one question on this vote before we take it.
Yep.
We are short one member by totality, so our board is made up of six members currently. What is the threshold for this vote? Is it a majority of the board, is it a majority of those present?
Those present.
Those present, so...
As long as you have a quorum, you do.
So it's, this, either, either motion would, an affirmative action on a motion would take three votes. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Do we have motion? Motion's comments on this.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
There is no other comments, I'd like to make a motion on the special land use for Sunny's Pool and More, located at permanent parcel 0818-326-002. The motion would be to grant the special land use pursuant to six, it was six, subjects. The first would be that all Building Department requirements were met. The second would be that all Fire Department requirements would be met. Third would be that retail space would remain less than 4,000 total square feet. That all handicap spots are properly marked. That employee parking remains as situated in the rear, and that the gate remains open. And that the site plan be submitted to the township for records and other departmental reviews.
I'll support that.
Also a floor plan?
Certainly.
Also a dimensioned floor plan?
Fully dimensioned floor plan.
I would, I would modify that last to a site plan with a fully dimensioned floor plan.
And I'll support it.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to request a roll call.
Yep.
Mr. Tuckfield votes yes, Mr. Shudo?
Yes.
Mr. Bentley?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
That motion passes four to nothing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And I'll have this note of six things forwarded to me.
Now on, you're gonna be dealing with our departments, and Mr. Skirdal will give you them recommendations in writing, and we'll take it, then you, you'll take it from there.
Good, thank you, have a nice evening.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, there's one other thing I just wanna mention for the record. I... I asked a question, uh, that was answered off-mic. Uh, we believe we have a legal, uh, legal consultant in the House this evening, and he was good enough to answer in the affirmative. I just wanna make note of that for the record.
You do, and my name is Greg Meehan, thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
All righty.
Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Item nine, public comments, non-agenda items. Being none. Uh, item ten, Commissioners' comments.
I have a few. I'd like to congratulate Mr. Oliver first and foremost.
Thank you.
I mean, he's gonna fill some big shoes, but he's been in that position before, and I'm sure he'll do fine.
Thank you.
My second comment is, I think, is the Planning Commission, um, one item need to address is the five G cell towers. They're moving into a lot of locations, and people are kind of leery what's going on with them. So, I think I talked to our planning consultant earlier, and he's gonna research it, and he said he has a meeting coming up with, with the lawyer. Next, I'd like to talk about electronic, uh, planning packets. I think we were budgeted last year. With everything that went on, I don't think it moved forward. So, my request would be for the Board of Trustees to look at getting us some type of a computer, laptop, tablet, that we can have everything sent to us on a township tablet computer, so we can view it. Becky doesn't have to print the site plans or the blueprints or anything like that. We'd have it right in front of us. So, that's my second recommendation, I'd like to see the township do, and that's basically it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you. All righty, uh, ZBA liaison update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I have nothing from the ZBA, we've not had a meeting since our, uh, past meeting. Um, I did have one add-on to Mr. Shudo's comments, if I could, just with regards to the electronics. Uh, Mr. Shudo and I have talked about this a couple times, and traditionally, I've been, uh, for electronic packets, but against the township giving us, uh, the electronics to use them, primarily a, a budgetary concern. Um, I've probably changed my mind a little bit on that recently, uh, specifically after some conversations with people about, um, where township business should be conducted and how the township file should be if they're sent to a computer that's being officially used. It's better to be one that, that the township is able to provide and keep necessary records for. So, um, I think digital is the way to go, um, as much as I'd like to use my own, uh, my own machine for it, uh, sounds like it's probably the better way to go at this point.
Good. Okay. All right, Planning Department's comments. Mr. Skirdal, anything? I know there's a lot of action for ya.
Thanks. Yeah, Planning Department, I'm, Mr. Van Tiplin's been in staff, been actively interviewing planning directors, so I know Mr. Van Tiplin won't add anything, but they conducted tours last Friday for two candidates.
Well, we're moving forward.
Yes.
All right, and you're settling in? Very good.
Catching up.
Okay, thank you. All right, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Shudo?
Support.
Support by Mr. Tuckfield, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.